Blessed are our lives, thank you for giving us strength to stay. We come to you in humbleness, knowing that you see us, you care for us. We know outside we have a symbol before us with the flags lowered that is a stern reminder to us that a number of people have lost their lives. We ask that you comfort those that have lost lives in our community and throughout the world, specifically a number that is far beyond our imagination, that have suffered and died as a result of COVID. We ask that you heal our land, heal our area, that we might once again proclaim you as being the one that can take care of all of our needs. We now ask your blessings upon the meeting that we're about to embark on today, that the decisions here that will be made will be pleasing to you and a benefit to our community. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this February 23rd, 2021, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to remind you, if you want to be placed specifically on the agenda, you'll need to contact the county administrator's office at least seven days in advance of any meeting. However, we do allow the public to address the meeting today, later, and under matters presented by the public, which will be an agenda item this evening, Agenda Item 18. Again, welcome everyone. Our first item of consideration is Items of Consent, Agenda Item Number Five. Put the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Items of Consent be approved.
Sir. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one out, absent. Agenda Item Number Six, we will have a report on delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grandstaff. Welcome Scott.
Thank you. This is a report as of, the personal property collection as of January 29th, 2021, we collected eighty-seven point five, five-six percent of the 2020 personal property taxes. That figure back in January of 2020 was eighty-six point nine-three. The real estate collection as of January 29th, 2021, we have collected ninety-one point oh-seven percent of the 2020 real estate taxes. That figure as of January 2020 was eighty-nine point six-oh. Since the 1st of January 2021, taxes collected ninety-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars. And our debt set off, which is from last year's file, because we just have submitted the 2021 file, is one hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight. So far in February, we've had forty-one DMV stops, and January we had eighteen. As you recall me saying in previous meeting that our, we submitted a file in January, that's why that number's increasing. We have a new file, and we're staying quite busy with that. And last week, I mailed our delinquent real estate and personal property bills, mailed approximately eleven thousand bills.
Anyone have any questions to Mr. Grandstaff?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven, we'll have an update from Mark Heath, Martinville, Henry County, EDC. Mark, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a brief update for February. Under small business, we had a think tank, virtual workshop on February 10th. You can see the folks that came to that. There will be a Zoom technique workshop on March the 18th. So much of our life now is involved in Zoom meetings, and just tips on how to do that better. You can see there were ten business inquiries and four site visits that Valerie made during the last month. We also, or she did rather, Valerie Harper participated in the SWAM government procurement planning meeting. And you can see the different items that are still going forward, the Pay It Forward Grant, the COVID emergency disaster grant for the fund. And we continue to market all of the opportunities that businesses have through our online networking. In marketing, attached is the unemployment report for December. The county stays stable at five point three percent. It's kind of leveled off there. We had two third-party requests for information, which is not unusual for the beginning of the year, it's a little bit down from previous months. We had a kickoff meeting for the new, planning for the next stage or build-out at Kamala Crossing, so that we can continue to grade there now that sites are beginning to get taken up. We participated in jobs EQ, work workshops, that's the online way that we present our job and unemployment numbers to prospects. It's a very strong, robust database. There've been a lot of Zoom meetings, even today. Mr. Hall and I have been on one, Mr. Pace has also, with Crown Holdings, a lot is moving quickly on that project, and we hope to see construction in the not-too-distant future, but things are going well there. We finished out our last three-year grant with Harvest. We're in the process of negotiating for our new three-year grant that will begin in January of '22. And I put on here, one of the things that Spencer's had to do in the last month is find fifty-five gallon steel drum suppliers for advanced revert. That's not a request that you get every month, so that was one that was a little bit unusual. I'm happy to say that we found two or three suppliers for that. And we're working on Kamala Crossing road improvements, how to fund those off-site improvements. In tourism, you can see the guests that we've had in our visitor center, there were thirty-two hundred sixty-two people on the Dick and Willie. We continue to send e-blast out to clients and to sixteen thousand subscribers. Blogs are being done. We've updated all the Smith River Fest pages on our website. And when I say "we," the tourism staff has done that. Smith River, our staff got a new demo pool sponsorship from SOVA and Securita Vendor also. And the final report for the Virginia Recovery Grant that we got, the ten thousand dollars has been submitted. That money was used for our new website and for a new feature to build your own custom itinerary, so that as more people are doing online activities, that helped a lot with that. We also are going to be a sponsor for Piedmont Arts for their annual sixtieth anniversary. Mount Laurel and Matthew Wade Foundation received grants, as did the Virginia Garden Tour, an annual, obviously an annual event. And Talent Development, Sarah's been very busy with hosting the Five Points Information Sessions for all HR managers of local industry, to help them better present this to their employees. We have bi-monthly meetings that she's involved in. She spoke at Kiwanis Club. And we also got a Virginia Corporation Marketing Grant of thirty-seven thousand dollars, which has been finalized. That was for our relocation guide, our Window Clings, the airport ads that we have in Greensboro, and for our state travel guide, support of that. And she's been involved as Mr. Hall, Mr. Pace, myself have with Catherine Van Ooyen on multiple grants, grant applications, that we're trying to find support, financial support where we can. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions, Mark, at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Eight, says Financial Advisor. Mr. Hall, do you have anything that we need to insert into this?
No, sir, not at this point.
Board members, longstanding board members, do you ever recall that we never had anything under financial? This is a first for me.
Well, we cannot spend money with what we have.
Okay. Agenda Item Number Nine, consideration of performance agreements. And you have before you a summary, and Mr. Hall is going to cover this.
Yes, sir. With the onset of COVID-19 and the protocols that went with it, the traditional method of approving performance agreements for economic development deals prior to the public announcements has changed. Given our recent success with economic announcements, we need to catch up on these official documents. While public announcements of the Lamtech expansion on January 15th and the Crown Holdings facility on January the 28th have taken place through the governor's office, we still have those associated documents that need to be officially executed. We have downloaded each of those documents to your iPad instead of giving you a hundred and some pages of text. Each of these is pretty standard, you know, all of our agreements are pretty standard. The only thing that really changes is the name of the company and the date. I have taken the liberty of giving you a synopsis of each of these documents. There are three associated with Crown Holdings that are in your packet, as well as in front of you on the piece of paper. And then there is one for laminate technology. There are still, there's still at least one more document for Crown Holdings that we will have to get approved. That is the land conveyance for Lot Four, but that cannot take place until we survey the lot, formally record it in the courthouse, that sort of thing. So that is one that's still to come. But what you have in front of you is catching us up through the Lamtech announcement and the Crown Holdings announcement. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. We probably would need two motions, one to accept all three Crown agreements, and then a separate one to accept the Lamtech agreement. And then the chairman will be authorized to sign those.
County Attorney, Mr. Lyle, do you have anything to add to this, since these were legal documents?
No, I was in, I was involved in many back and forths about all of them. They've been reviewed by a lot of people, and they look good to me.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion that we collectively, before you, with this summary that's before you approve the performance agreements with the Crown.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent, Jennifer. And likewise, I'll accept the motion that we authorize a performance agreement with laminate technology.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Ten, information items. I'll begin by taking comments from the board, starting with Dr. Martin.
No, sir.
Mr. Bryant.
No, sir.
Ms. Buchanan.
No, sir.
Mr. Slaughter.
No, sir.
And I have none. Mr. Hall.
Just a couple of things for you. First, logistically, as we move through this day, as you know, we have a meeting at five o'clock with the school board and other couple of things. School board needs to go into closed session on its own for a specific matter. They will do so in this room at 4:45. They anticipate that taking place fairly quickly. We will be back in here at five o'clock for our joint meeting with the school board, so there'll be a lot of movement around. They will make their presentation in this room, as opposed to the conference room where they usually do it, just for cause of the space of the conference room and the number of folks that are going to be in there. So they will actually present here at the five o'clock session. Also part of that five o'clock session, our financial advisors from Davenport, David Rose will be here to very briefly, and we have stressed to David, very briefly, walk you through the two refinancings that are going to be in front of you for action. One from the school board, action tonight, one from you, and then setting up a public hearing moving forward. So he will be part of that five o'clock session, but he has been asked and agreed to go quickly, so that we leave ample time for the school board to present what it wants you to see. So there's going to be a lot of moving parts going forward, but just so when we come back in here, the school board may already be in closed session, so we will need to stay out of the room until they adjourn their closed session and come back in.
Mr. Hall.
Yes, sir.
Will you make a formal introduction to the board and to the media?
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, I forgot, I didn't turn around. This is Dawn Vaughn. Dawn is our new registrar. Dawn's a familiar face in this community, born and raised here, former school teacher, so we have that in common. She went into law enforcement, so we don't have that in common. But Dawn worked in law enforcement, enforcement many years, was part of the administrative staff at the Police Academy for many years, and has joined us. Dawn, I'd like for you to come on up and introduce yourself, state whatever remarks you feel appropriate.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, nice to see you all again. I know, I think I know most of you, and thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to serving the community. Thank you.
She's, she's jumping into a moving car. There's a lot of changes in the registrar's office and electoral board changes coming out of Richmond, so she's got a lot to deal with, but Dawn's a very bright young lady, and I anticipate that'll be a quick, a quick adjustment. We're proud to have her. And one other thing before, I only got one other thing to talk about. We start our department head budget meetings in-house on Monday, so that's a pretty intense couple of weeks as we go through those, but that's really the first step in crafting a proposed budget. But, you know, like, as you know, that's not the start of our work on a budget. We track stuff all year long, but that'll be the start of our department head meetings. So for the next couple of weeks, so it'll take up a lot of time from staff, so we'll hopefully come out of that with an idea of what we will propose to you when we get ready to do that.
All right. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Eleven, if someone will cite the items allowing us to go into closed meeting. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into closed meeting under Freedom of Information Act under 2.23711A1 for discussion of appointees to the Industrial Development Authority, Planning Commission, Henry Martinville Department of Social Services, and the West Piedmont Planning District Commission. 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters. 2.23711A3 for discussion of acquisition disposal, disposal of real estate. And 2.23711A5 for discussion of as-yet-unannounced industries.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor? It is five with one absent. See everyone upstairs in five minutes.
So again, it's reasonable to assume that at that roughly seventeen million, that's still outstanding, it's at a two and a half, or a little 2.45% rate. When we first approached the county board and the staff, I should say, we indicated that we believe the rate might be lower than or at 2%. And if that's the case, we were looking at some savings all in, after any of the costs of the issuance by VPSA of about a million and a half dollars on the high end. And again, that translated to around a hundred thousand dollars a year. Right now, it's hard to say where we're going to be. And as a result of that, what I'm going to recommend, and we put it in here, is that we come back at the public hearing and get your feedback as to what you believe should be a minimum savings level to move forward. So the way the VPSA works is that you would be one of multiple local governments in a pool. And in that pool, you could tell VPSA ahead of time, for example, if a million dollars is the number that you want and nothing less, you indicate to them that is the savings that if we cannot get it on that day of the sale, and I'll show you that, we simply will not be part of the sale. The good news for both parties is that there is no cost to us if we decide that we do not want to go forward because the savings is not large enough, or for any other reasons that should stop the financing, you are not in any way liable or at risk. That said, one of the things that we like about this is the ease, because we know you're dealing with COVID, you're dealing with the CARES Act, you're dealing with budgets. So with all of that, unlike some of the other financing strategies, this one is such that the VPSA puts together the official statement, we help them do that, we already put the application in, which again is not binding, that went in yesterday, and we did that with the help of your staff. We do not have any other out-of-pocket expenses. It's the, it's again, it's a very streamlined process. So if all of that makes sense to both boards, page three, the last page here, is the schedule. So I am here today on the 23rd, as I indicated, we sent in the application yesterday. By virtue of your approving, if you do, the resolution this evening by the school board, that will then be sent over electronically to VPSA, so they'll have it as part of the file. Again, if the county board sets that public hearing, we will so notify them that the March 23rd will be the date at which we're going to get this teed up, if you would. Now, let's assume I'll come back on the 23rd if you'll have me, or someone will be back on the 23rd, and we will tell you where we think the savings are at that time. But again, we won't know until the actual sale date, and that sale date is April 20th. That's again, it's a tentative date, it could move, but that's what VPSA is estimating right now. Even if we don't have the interest rates where we want, I would recommend we hold the public hearing, we set what we want, when I say "we," meaning the board wants as the savings. And again, if it should be there, wonderful. If it's not, typically what happens with VPSA is this financing, or potential financing, can roll to their next financing, and they do financings typically twice a year. So this is considered their spring sale, then they do a fall sale in about November. If it doesn't work then, again, you just continue to be queued up. It is possible, and this is going to be something that the county attorney will have to opine on, we may have to have a subsequent public hearing, depending upon if we cross over either a fiscal year or some elections or what have you. So we'll cross that bridge if and when we get there. With all that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions. I must say, never say never, but when we got that interest rate, or the interest rates at 2.5 and 2.4%, we didn't really expect to be refinancing this, but we put the provisions in there. That was one of the things we cared about, was that very flexible, should something bad happen. We thought more on the bad side than if we had to refinance or restructure for cash flow purposes, that's one of the things we set up. We probably did, if I look at the records, say, well, maybe someday we'll refinance, but I didn't really think we'd be refinancing potentially just a few years later. But here we are, and happy to answer any questions. Again, I appreciate the opportunity.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Hall, will you have additional background?
Yeah, the action needed on this item would be approval by the school board of the resolution that you have been presenting. Once, assuming that approval comes, when the board supervisors will even take action to set a public hearing for March 23rd on this item. We have a second refinancing item that's specific to the board supervisors, and we'll do that after we finish there.
So what do you perceive to be, again, the savings from a 2.4, 2.5 to a 2.0?
Well, I think that's, that's roughly about one and a half million dollars. But again, my senses were below that today, so what I should add is one more concept, that's this. When we look at refinancings, to make sure that we're not just, we call it churning a transaction, we ask ourselves, is the savings, after all the costs, what is it on what's called a present value savings basis? And typically, anything that's above 3% of a present value savings is considered a worthwhile refinancing. When we submitted this application yesterday and did the numbers last week, your savings level was close to 9%. You were basically three times that level. So if you just do the math and say to yourself, fine, maybe we were about, anything over half a million dollars is considered at least industry-wide worthwhile. I personally would like to see us not go down to, I don't think half a million dollars is something I'd recommend that we do, even though that may be considered industry-standard acceptable. I think you, I mean collectively, should have a higher bar than that. That's, that's me talking, but that's going to be your choice. So we can, again, prior to or the March 23rd meeting, show you where we think you are, and then we can also give you that PV savings level, but at least, because I think I'm not going to be there that night, so one of my colleagues will be, at least me as the senior person in the firm and what have you, I would like to at least suggest we do more than that. I just think that we may have another crack at this in a year or two, we may never, but I doubt that. I think we probably will as we move along. So I would like to suggest that we don't think of it as the 3%, I'd like to see a higher bar, if you're calling.
Does the term of the loan remain the same?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so we lose nothing in terms of time.
That's correct. That's exactly right. Yes, it's, it's, you know, that's, that's a very good question. It's called a matched maturity, and whatever matures, the same years mature as the same structure.
Good.
So it is just purely going from, let's say, 2.5, 2.4, down to what we hope is maybe close to 2. But again, it's not actually, interestingly enough, the way bonds work, it's not linear. It's not like every 10 basis points equals the same percent, it doesn't work that way. So having said that, it could be, you know, a little different than 2%, a little above, a little below, and yet it could still, at least in my world, meet a good solid target.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I vote the school board approve this refinancing resolution as presented.
Do you have a need second, or the chairman? All in favor, please say aye. I'm ready to write in. Okay. Make sure to pass it.
Motion to set the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move we set a public hearing for March 23rd.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, setting a public hearing March 23rd, 6:00 PM, to take input. Any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent, Jennifer.
One other refinancing opportunity specific to the board supervisors, but it's in fact, we're asking you to consider refinancing some 2010 financing that we did at that time. It's in the amount of 1.125 million, and this is going through another part of the BSBA and state opportunities. This will, we're going to refinance this through Carter Bank. We've got two bids, and Carter was the best, and also local, which was a good one-two combo. You have a resolution in your board packet. We would need a voice vote or a roll call vote on this, so if the board's prepared to make a motion in a second, I'll do the roll call to approve that.
Okay, the board's had the opportunity to review this, since it's part of the board packet. Put us the pleasure, board.
I move that we adopt the resolution to refinance.
Second. A motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Hall, will you hold the board for it?
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
That should take care of the financial obligations, which now is it up to the school board presentation, and you guys will come down and we'll turn the podium around.
Tonight, we would like to start with a thank you to our community, first of all, our staff, our students, our families, the board of supervisors, and the school board. We appreciate all your patience and support. This year has been like no other, but we have worked together as a community, as we always do, and we have continued to strive and support our students. As proven by the pandemic, our staff are essential. We need to recruit, retain, and train a high-quality, diverse staff in order to provide our students with opportunities and experiences that they need in order to be competitive in the global market. This wonderful staff that we will attract and retain will help each student reach his or her potential, and therefore be contributing member to our community and to the workforce. So last year, with all that in mind, we were well on our way to the alignment of steps with years of service for our staff, and we also were looking at providing these salary increases that would ensure that our staff members were compensated comparable to the staff members in surrounding districts. So therefore... So therefore, it is my hope that we will continue tonight to discuss the compensation of our staff members and providing those experiences and opportunities for our students, and that we will pick up where we left off last year before the pandemic began in our area. So Mr. Scott and Dr. Boone have prepared a presentation tonight we would like to share with you all. We are still waiting on final information from the General Assembly, but however, we have our presentation tonight, and at the end of the presentation, if anyone has any questions, we'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mrs. Strayer, and good evening to Mr. Chairman and members of both boards. We'll try to be brief but thorough in what we present, and again, if there are questions, we'll be happy to answer those at the end. The last 11 months have been full of challenges and full of uncertainty, and that is not only because of the safety aspect of having school during a pandemic, but some of the uncertainty comes along with the revenue stream and what can be expected for funding. As we look at some of the new costs that we have had to incur, one of the first things that comes to mind is additional costs for PPE, for our teachers, for our custodians, for everybody who works in our schools and with our schools. We've also incurred costs with remote learning, whether that's through the software or through the devices. At the same time, we've been expected to operate and offer state programs. With state programs, some of the costs that comes along there is on the shoulders of the local dollars with our local required effort. With that comes funding SOQ positions or the positions that we're required to staff through the standards of quality. We've always been fortunate enough to go beyond those recommendations and those requirements, rather, and have non-SOQ funded positions. We have grant-funded positions. In the budget that is being discussed in Richmond right now, there's some language about SOQ-funded positions and raises that may be coming their way. With those will also come raises for non-SOQ-funded positions. We have, just as the board supervisors did, we offer hazard pay to our employees at one point. We've also outfitted our school buildings, our buses, and nearly every facet of our educational program with COVID-19 safety protocols and enhancements. On top of all that, during the regular school year, we're still responsible for the supplies and materials that our students and our teachers and our families need, and we have an ongoing list of capital improvement projects. Note here is that in every year, we have a list of capital improvement projects that outpaces the funding that we can use on those projects, so that every year, there are projects that have to wait another year. Fortunately, with some of the federal funding that we are set to receive, we might be able to tackle some of the HVAC upgrades that are required, and federal funding can help a little bit with that. We also know in terms of the achievement gap with our students right now that we're going to have a Herculean task ahead of us as far as student remediation and our summer school offering. With each of these expenses, there are different pots of money, if you will, that help to pay for those, between the state funds and the local funds, and then our special grants category, which is a combination of flow-through funds from federal and state grants. And the terms that you're probably familiar with are the CARES Act funds and the SIR Part II funds, and we'll give a little bit more description on that here momentarily. In terms of those, when we look at those revenue sources as having experienced some growth, we're having the potential for growth, one of the first things that bears mentioning is the federal funds in the CARES Act and the SIR II funds. We are set to receive $8.037 million in those federal funds. However, it's very important to acknowledge the fact that these funds cannot be spent on things that aren't related to combating COVID. So these aren't funds that can be easily used to handle compensation increases or go out and buy the things that we would normally buy with state and local dollars. Based on the governor's proposed budget, the governor is proposing a budget that would show us with an increase in approximately $1.4 million in state funding. That does increase the local required effort that would be funded by the board of supervisors. However, that's, at this point, just one guy's opinion on the matter. We're still waiting, as Mrs. Strayer said, for the General Assembly to come out with the approved state budget. We're hoping for good news. And then, of course, with the local funding each year, we go into our budget development process with the hope for level funding or above, and that's sort of where we are at this point, too. As we look at the budget items that we have discussed with our stakeholders, the list that's presented for you now represents not everything that we have discussed, but the things that have survived the budget process to this point. So there are a couple items that have fallen by the wayside, and we've really locked in on these items as being a priority. Now, at the top of this list, you see a figure, a little over $2 million. That in no way indicates what we would be asking of the board of supervisors above level funding. That is just a sort of a marker for the time being of the estimated cost of these things, above our baseline cost. In no particular order, the things that we have identified as being priorities, step increases for everybody who is on our teacher scale, this includes school counselors, ITRTs, a number of the reading specialists and so forth, not just classroom teachers, but many other licensed employees there. When we look at the increases for our classified scale, increases for our school administrators, we have run models to figure out the cost of doing multiple steps or multiple percentage points, but the numbers that you see on the pie chart there, those represent the percentage or the share of that $2 million. So you can see that what we're talking about here in terms of the teachers, that's the lion's share. That's, you know, 40% of what we're, 47% of what we're talking about. But if there are questions about that, we can entertain those at the end. One note here, you see two items have an asterisk with them. As we have been listening to what the news is out of Richmond, there's talk about, originally it was a 2% increase, then a 3%, 5%. So with, as we wait to see how that will all settle out, we have different models prepared, ones that show different step increases that we would offer teachers and employees on the classified scale. Some of those match a step increase with a percentage increase. So these numbers right now are calculated without the percentage increase, but are more derived from doing steps on the scale. Steps on our scale has been a topic for the school system for a number of years. In an ideal situation, when a teacher is hired, we're looking for a one-to-one ratio, years of service to their placement on that step scale. However, because of economic shortfalls around 2012, 13, through 2016, 17, we weren't always financially in a position to give steps on the scale. So there were years where we went without honoring that system, and because of that, you see that, I've only shown up through 13 years of service here, but everybody on those top two-thirds of the teacher scale have pulled away from that one-to-one relationship, and most are four steps behind, and that's something that we would like to correct. That's not something that can be corrected very easily, though, in one fell swoop. To get back into alignment, it would mean giving five steps on the teacher scale in one year. As I said, I don't think that that is the most prudent thing to do. However, we think that a reasonable target would be three steps, and then adjusting the percentages depending on what the Richmond's budget says. Price tag on that is just under $1 million, and Dr. Boone has run some other models that if, for instance, Richmond says it needs to be a 5% increase or a 3% increase, I need to take a breath. I'm going to let Dr. Boone describe some of those other models and talk about how that might skew some things.
As we ran the numbers, as Mr. Scott said, three steps is going to cost about $1 million more over our current salaries. If we look at three steps and 1%, that would cost about $1.3 million. If we look at three steps and 2%, that would cost about $1.6 million. And looking at the scales, if you did three steps and 2% for the teachers, the average for the scale of what we pay our current teachers, that would equal 5%. So to do the 5% that the governor has come out recently and said that hopefully the General Assembly passes for teachers would cost you a little bit more than $1.6 million above current salaries for teachers. For our classified staff, right now, we've looked at three steps, and that would cost about $185,000. Four steps would cost about $240,000. To get the classified staff around a 5% increase, it would have cost an additional $400,000. So if you take the numbers that Mr. Scott had presented earlier, if you're looking, if we're looking at the 5% increase for instructional staff, it's going to cost about $2 million above the current salaries, and that's just instructional staff. That does not include what we're looking at for transportation and our administrators as well.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. And with what he just said, good news for everybody in this room is that there's a pretty fair expectation that if the budget from the state comes out and says it needs to be a higher percentage, that also means that there's going to be more state funding that comes along with that. So that wouldn't be on our local taxpayer to try to fund an increase like that. So to summarize where we are today, unfortunately, we only have the governor's proposed budget to go from at this point. We keep hoping every day to see more information, and we will have a quick turnaround on that information when we get that to try to figure out where everything has settled out. But our priorities, as stated, we do want to improve the compensation for the employees on the teacher scale, the classified staff, our bus drivers and aides. I skipped over that earlier, but that would be a percentage increment as they've been getting, and then our administrators also. We would like to add bus drivers with insurance benefits. We know that this is a big recruitment and retention effort to keep good drivers. Every school division could always use more drivers. We have one position that would be a central office position for managing our student information system. That has played very well with our stakeholders as a priority, and then adding a nursing program at Career Academy. That would be a program that we would be able to grow, hopefully, over a couple years, but would be a very good program for our Henry County citizens. I do want to remind both boards that while we have enjoyed an increase in the federal funding, that those have limited uses, and I don't want anyone to leave here thinking that, you know, $8 million in from the federal government means $8 million that we can shave somewhere else. So we have to be very careful that that money is being spent as it's designed to be spent. Do you want to remind everyone that our capital improvement plan, we have appreciated the increased funding that both boards have allowed for capital projects. Every year, however, there are projects that we have to say need to wait another year. We're hoping that with the 1% sales tax, that that will help, but also, some of these federal funds, if we can use them, tie them to COVID-related expenses and knock out some of the HVAC aspects of them, that will help us make up some ground on our capital improvement plan also. And then, just as a figure that I want to make sure I clearly preface here, the $2 million to $2.5 million that we're talking about as being the growth in our expenses, that isn't an indication of what we would be asking from the board of supervisors. That is all dependent upon how Richmond treats us in all this, and we're hoping for good news. We're hoping for a budget that is more favorable than the governor's budget, but that kind of gives us a starting point to think about if there's anything that needs to be taken back to the drawing board. That's kind of the growth that we're looking at at this point. And I'll turn things back over to Mrs. Strayer at this point. If you have questions, the three of us are ready for this.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hall.
The COVID money that you mentioned, the $8, probably $8 million, that's what you know you're getting, that's what you have now or know you're getting?
Yes.
Does not include any additional money that may be coming in the next round, is that correct?
That is correct, and so what we have to do, since the Department of Ed covers all our money, some grants are just allocated to different people. The Department of Ed actually asked us to fill out an application out. They are following the model they follow for all our federal funding, like you've heard us talk about Title I grants. So we will apply for any money that we are allocated, and then if they approve the expenditures that we list, then we get those funds. And so that's like, as Mr. Scott kept saying, we can't supplant, we can't spend it on things we already buy. We can only spend those on things related to COVID-19. And so far, you know, we've already applied for one set of CARES money, and some things that we asked for were denied because it was considered supplanting. So we are, we do know we have strict guidelines, but yes, sir, we are hoping to continue to get additional money, but we are, we think a bulk of the money will be spent on remediation, as Mr. Scott said, summer school, after-school programs, and we have three years to spend the money, so it'll be allocated over the three years. Well, if you all don't have any more questions, that's, thank you for tonight. Thank you for all coming out and for your patience with us.
I'll call the 6:00 PM session, February 23rd, 2021, meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order from our recess. I'd like to welcome all visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any meeting to be put on the agenda. However, the public may address the board tonight under matters presented by the public that will take up a little later in this meeting. Again, welcome, everyone. Our first business item of consideration is a public hearing on the budget amendment proposal for the FY 2021 county budget. Mr. Hall?
As part of the ongoing development of Commonwealth Crossing Business Center, the county wishes to work with Southwestern Virginia Gas Company and the Henry County Industrial Development Authority to install natural gas to the park. Henry County has received a grant of $1.5 million from the Appalachian Regional Commission to assist with this project. The board will be asked to appropriate an additional $4.5 million from the general fund for this project, approve the performance agreement, which is included in your packet, and award a sole source contract to Southwestern Virginia Gas to install the service. Our purchasing department has approved this as a sole source endeavor because Southwestern Virginia Gas Company is the only gas company to provide service in Henry County. This appropriation will be a not-to-exceed number, with the project's total cost potentially being less than the amount appropriated. Because this amount exceeds 1% of the current budget, the board is required to hold a public hearing to receive citizen input. The public hearing has been properly advertised and scheduled for this meeting, and to tell you the further process, the IDA meets tomorrow, and it is expected to act on this item as part of its meeting as well.
Okay, I will open the public hearing at 6:01 to take input on this if anyone wishes to. Is there anyone wishing to address the board during this public hearing? Seeing no hands and hearing no one, I will close the public hearing at 6:01. The board's had sufficient time to review the attachments and its working papers. Put us in place as a board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the appropriation of $4.5 million approval for a performance agreement with SVG for installation and awarding of the sole source contract.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions?
It will be contingent upon the IDA.
Correct.
Contingent on the IDA, yes. Any other questions? All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Agenda item number 17, general highway matters. We have with us Lisa Hughes from VDOT. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you. Well, if you've been around the county, I guess, in the last week or so, you'll see us, our main focus has been on debris removal. This last ice storm, the roads ended up being fine. It was trees, and we had several hundred down, and what we're concentrating on now is just trying to get up those trees and haul them off, and we'll eventually chip them up and get rid of them. Anyway, we're still working on that. We'll be for a little while. Fosco Springs Road, we've got a pipe collapse. I know Mr. Zaire's not here, but that happened right after the ice storm, so we'll be working on that. That's in Ridgeway. I know, Ms. Buchanan, you had asked a while about the intersection of 58 and 687. I don't have anything definitive to share with you, but we are looking at different forms of warning lights, whether it be overhead forms of warning lights, whether it be overhead or on the side, and maybe eventually some other improvements, but for right now, we're looking at just some kind of warning devices.
You should still have it on the radar.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I think, David, and I apologize if this is a repeat, shared with you about the contract for Lover's Leap, that project. We have entered into a contract with Branch Civil for three hundred million dollars for the construction of Lover's Leap, section of 58. And that construction, Branch has actually started, they've got to finish up the design, they've got some right-of-way to acquire, we're going to have to relocate utilities, but hope to start construction actually this year, and the completion date will be summer of 2026.
Really?
So that's very good news.
Now, what's the stretch? How long is it?
I believe it's around seven miles. Goes from the west corporate limits to Stewart up to the top, top of the mountain around busted rock. I believe it's seven miles.
Good.
And that's all I have.
Does anyone have anything for Lisa Hughes?
I have one question. The de-acceleration lane here at Henry County, do you still have that?
Yes, yes, it's one of those projects we, you know, got to get in a turnstile here and get it done.
All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next agenda item is matters presented by the public. We do have one that contacted the county administrators' office prior to this meeting. I do have a board policy statement that I'll read. This applies not only to our first speaker, but anyone else wishing to speak. This is a time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. If you care to address the board, come to the podium, state your name, your subject matter, and the district in which you live. By coming to the podium, you have agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board and its members. The members of this board are committed to giving you the same consideration. Please keep your presentation between three to five minutes. We have a Mr. Jim Roberts from the Reed Creek District that signed up. Mr. Roberts, come to the podium.
Okay, I think it's her. I distribute this.
If you'll hand it to the clerk, and then...
This is one each, and there's a set of photographs, and then it's separated.
Okay, Mr. Roberts.
I should explain that, first of all, I'm new to the county, and I'm sharing my first impressions as a new resident. And foremost, I hate to tell you that an initial impression of myself, as well as others who have visited me, is that the Henry County strikes them as a dumping ground for trash. Coming down Highway 220, you can't help but see bus farms, and also, there's one on Highway 57, abandoned automobiles, dilapidated homes, trash in the yards, and no one seems to be able to do anything about it. So I inquired in the planning and zoning office, and I was informed there is an ordinance, but the ordinance doesn't seem to be enforced. There seems to be no conscientious effort, no program for people to, rather for an official, whether a volunteer or an employee, to assess citations for obvious trash that not only accumulates vermin and unsavory health consequences, but also just gives a unfavorable impression for our fine county. So I'm suggesting that the ordinance could be strengthened by enabling not the occupant, but the property owner to be cited and to be given a suitable fine, as well as a adjudication process, I'm stumbling on that word. It's a similar procedure that you find in major cities. As a property owner in three different states, including Washington DC, I am frequently cited by the city authorities, not because I'm doing anything improper, but because I happen to be the property owner. And as a consequence, I have to redress the issue that my tenants, both business as well as residential tenants, have caused. So that puts the onus on me to take prompt action, otherwise, I'm the one who ends up with the fine. The same process can be replicated here in Henry County. It doesn't have to be on such a judicial scale, but it can be implemented so that it will discourage people from abusing a good common sense and imposing this eyesore on the rest of us, including our visitors, which we dearly want to have and to keep. I realize the county is probably constrained somewhat by lack of funds to finance such an undertaking, but my thinking is that perhaps community groups might be able to contribute volunteers to not only provide the citations, but also to provide the research as to who's the owner of the property, so that they can be the ones who will properly assess the citation. And if the citation is not addressed, then the county should reserve the right to impose a lien on the property to recover its costs and the fine at some point in time. Happy to answer any questions, but I have experience that this works in other communities. It should work and will work here if an ordinance is enhanced to permit that kind of a program. Just as an aside, I happen to mention when I visited with the planning and zoning director about an eyesore I saw on Bassett where some vendor was displaying his wares, not only in the front of his building, but on the side of the building, and it turns out the side of the building didn't belong to him, it belonged to Bassett Furniture Corporation. And they complained, get this trash off our property, and it took forever to do that. But the fine was imposed, not the fine, but the request was imposed on the vendor, not on the property owner. Happy to answer any questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
All right.
Does anyone else wishing to address the board on the matters presented by the public? I see one hand back there. Mr. Stickoff.
You're not reading this, son. I'm Doug Stickoff. About to lose everything here. I'm Doug Stickoff from Collinsville, Virginia. I was reading on this file that they gave out at the start of this, where they're having a budget meeting for the Board of Supervisors and the School Board and considering resolution of refinancing the school debt. I don't know how in debt the school is or what, but I got some examples I like to say, you know, just like the, I've mentioned the free health insurance before for the Board of Supervisors and the School Board. You know, I have no problem with the rank and file, the teachers, educators, and deputies getting this benefit. I think it's wonderful that we can give it to them, but I think they need to pass a resolution and do away with the free health insurance for the Board of Supervisors and the School Board. They're not showing any proof of any time worked, and I was told by Susan Rose and them that they had to work at least 25 hours a week, but they never shown any proof of that. And Dr. Cotton told me that they did a study on the, on the school, on the bus drivers, and they didn't work but 20 hours a week, so they didn't qualify for this health insurance. So why hadn't they done a study on y'all or the School Board? And from one time, they say it's a violation of their rights if the public knows that they're getting this free health insurance. But at one time, I was told on the Board of Supervisors and the School Board, there was five people getting it. Well, if they do away with that, that, I could save right at $40,000 a year for the taxpayers. And in other words, I'm saying if they're going to keep this insurance, they need to show proof of time worked, in my opinion. What kind of form do they use to track the time? They, and the code of Virginia says they can get it, but they got to get it in the manner and form that everybody else gets it, and everybody else has to work a required number of hours to get it. You know, I know I get up here and talk a lot, and I bring up touchy issues, but I do pay attention to what's going on in Henry County. And another thing, the School Board, they should have never sold them double wires down there for a hundred dollars apiece with industrial air and heat of them. One of them stayed on county property for 10 months till they could resell it to whoever bought it. And you tell me if I'm wrong. But like I say, I pay attention to, and I respect the people here, and I trust the people here, just like Tim Hall. I trust him more than he could ever imagine. He's, I met with the manager of Galax up there, and he told me, and I talked to him for a long time, he told me if he could do it, he didn't hire anybody to do it. And people don't realize it. Tim Hall is a county administrator, but he's the manager over the PSA, too. Can you imagine how much money that's saving the taxpayers of Henry County? I'm just here trying to point out things, and I hope that, I hope somebody's listening. I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the board on the matters presented by the public? Seeing no hands and hearing no one, I will move on. Mr. Hall, do you have any other business for the board's consideration tonight?
No, sir.
Board members, do you have any other business? I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Subway.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor? It's five with one absent, Jennifer. Everyone have a good evening.